Item number eight, we have a public hearing this evening. We're going to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for municipal services for 2017-18.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, in the proposed 2017-18 budget, departmental revenues are projected to total $5.5 million. This is about 11 percent of the total revenues that the general fund is expecting in the next fiscal year. These departmental revenues, in large measure, are outlined in the city's master fee schedule. The rates for these particular services and generating these revenues are part of the master fee schedule, and the public hearing is the annual review and update of the master fee schedule. The schedule ensures that fee levels are appropriate to cover costs and make market comparisons as part of our consideration in adjusting these fees. The process that we follow each year is departments are asked to review the current fees for their particular departments and submit recommendations to the finance department for adjustments in the new fiscal year. The largest number of adjustments in the schedule for this year really relate to community development and particular building fees. There are adjustments for building permit, electrical permit, mechanical permit, and plumbing permit fees that, together, like I said, make up a majority of the adjustments. In the fire department, there is also changes to the plan check fee, and again, this is somewhat related and coordinated with the adjustments to the building permit fees. In community services, there are adjustments for, minor adjustments, for a fax fee, and also in parks and recreation, there's several adjustments to special events fees, the inclusion of new events. There's several small adjustments to athletic field fees. Finally, in the police department, there are just really one change in a permit fee related to fingerprinting, and there are some wording changes making our fee consistent with the DOJ fees that are also applied. In total, all of the adjustments, if activity in 2017-18 mirrored what occurred in 1617, there would be approximately $230,000 additional revenue generated by the master fee schedule for departmental fees. This represents about a 2 percent overall adjustment in the departmental fees. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the city council has.
Any questions of staff at this time? Jim?
To the chair, Jim, can you elaborate on the increase on building fees? Why, I mean, because what I want to say is, in the past, we've had a cost recovery study, and we've had, you know, explanations on why certain things have been increased. And I'll let you answer, and then I'll finish my comment.
I'm somewhat shocked, actually. My memory is failing rapidly here. It has been over 12 years since the cost allocation plan was done and the cost plan. And so it's really, you know, a long period of time. Any adjustments that have occurred since then have been really related to individual fees for market adjustment. This is not based on a cost recovery plan. This adjustment is based on a survey of other San Mateo County cities, looking at their fees, and a recognition, actually, that San Bruno's fees have lagged significantly behind in cost recovery. If you look at the total departmental expenditure for building inspection and the fee recovery, there is a gap. Looking at the survey, looking at our close nearby jurisdictions, the department felt that this was an adjustment that made a substantial step in eliminating that gap, and this is what they are recommending, but it is based on a market survey.
Not being privy to this gap, I don't, I really can't comment on that. I'm just going to go on record and say that this form of charging businesses, charging property owners, charging for development, in my opinion, is totally wrong. What we're doing is that we're increasing a cost, and we're not, unless we're behind in paying for the service, it's, in my opinion, that all we're doing is we're, in effect, gouging a customer based on a value of a project. And we know that our construction costs are some of the highest in the country, and we're getting, you know, and our customers are getting charged for that. You cannot tell me that a cost of a permit for a X type of addition or a type of remodel is going to mean that much more inspection time or staff time. So granted, if we're behind, if we're less than other jurisdictions in the county, that's fine, but I don't think that's a, really, a reason to, you know, to increase it. I've been on record, and I've talked to staff about cost recovery on types of applications, you know, that actually does take considerable staff time as far as review and for, you know, use permits, planning applications and things. Because, yes, there are other cities in this region that are outrageously high, but to base a permit cost on a cost of a, on a value of a project and then in an increasing scale is, to me, is just wrong, and it's just gotten out of hand. So I just wanted to know what, you know, why we're going up, in some cases, you know, 60 percent, you know, in our permit fees.
I think in part, in answering the question about cost recovery, in the 1718 proposed budget, the total cost for the building inspection division is projected at $1.9 million total cost. The recovery through fees, including the proposed adjustment, will bring us to about $1.5 million in recovery. So there remains a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar gap between the total expense and the revenue that the division is generating.
I'm just going to say my last comment is that the customer pays a lot. We pay for plan check fees as a 75 percent of what these building permit fees are going to be. And so the in-house review of projects is paid for. Now we've got an increased permit cost, which is, in my opinion, strictly just inspectors, and it's high.
Any other questions for staff? Marty?
I'm looking at the appendix for the water rate capacity and sewer rate capacity charges. Those have not been increased for a number of years. That's just wrong, in my opinion. If we're going to constantly have our residents pay more for water and sewer, then it's only right that when somebody ties into our system, the residents are investing into their system, and the fees for water and sewer have remained the same for at least, I would guess, 10 years, if not longer. They need to go up. It's only fair. If the residents are paying it, then so should anybody else that's tying into our new system. I wanted to point out, maybe this is just a little typo error, on page 55, for an illegal connection, it says $500 for per occurrence, and then on page 57, it says $750 for illegal connection. So it's $750, right? It's increasing it to $750? So just so it's consistent? Go ahead.
No, I, that is an inconsistency that was pointed out to me today, and when we did the review, I did hear from the department to adjust the water connection, but not the wastewater, but I think it would be appropriate to do that. So if you're approving the master fee schedule, I would recommend that on page 55, as you indicated, that the illegal connection for wastewater be adjusted to $750, to the same as the water one. And if I could just mention, and the appendix is, at least in my view, not part of the master fee schedule. It is just a appendix that is intended to reflect other fees or parking fines or other approvals. And so as far as the appendix is concerned, I actually updated it with what the council approved on water and wastewater rates. And for instance, the cable rates are what's in place right now, since the council has not acted. On the capacity charge, the council has, at the time of considering the water and wastewater rates, the discussion about capacity charge was brought up, and we, as a city staff, are reviewing that with Bardo Wells right now and hope very soon to come back to the council with a recommended adjustment to the capacity charges.
One other suggestion would be, where I work, Alameda County Water District, when you get a hydrant meter, you, there's a monthly charge for that, and I believe all we do here is that we take a deposit. So not only should you be charged for the water you're using, but for using the device that provides you the hydrant water, I think it would be right to charge for that.
To the chair.
Where you go?
A couple things. On the, when we last had a contract with the county in regards to backflows, I do see on page 81, there's something stipulating a backflow protective device in the two inches and smaller. Probably said going from 50 to 55, but I think it was about $42,500 or somewhere around there that we were contracting with the county in order to have backflow annual testing done, and that was passed with the caveat that we were going to look to see if that was something we should be recouping from commercial properties and should be placed in the master fee schedule. So I didn't see that, and so I just wanted to circle back around to that conversation from the contract. And also, I know, we've talked about in regards to fees, and I know for the city of San Bruno, an encroachment is based on the evaluation. So this is just a side note, but I would suggest that the city, when they're returning the deposit to a user, that it quantify an address. So we're one of a few cities that just gives a deposit back, which is great, right, but it doesn't quantify the address. So if you're a business and you're getting a check back, then you have to go down to research where it's stipulated. Most agencies and jurisdictions actually quantify what address that returned is from, makes good accounting on both ends. And I know when we talk about permits and the costs, and they vary, I mean, a basic off the top of my head, a basic building permit in Redwood City is $50. San Mateo, it's $117.36. So it does fluctuate from one end to the other. Inspections are much more detailed, as the vice mayor was saying, but when we're starting to say that we're at a certain level, I'm trying to understand too, in my mind, who has a little bit of knowledge now in the jurisdictions when it comes to this, how we're basing the costs as well as the recoup that needs to be made. So that, again, we want people to come and do the right thing, go through the process, have a good experience, and do the right thing.
Could I just ask you on the backflow, your comment on the backflow for vendor, was that page 81, section 410 you were referring to?
I was looking at, yes, section 410 is what I could see as far backflow device, but to me, that was adding, or for each one, I don't know. Is that stipulating that that is what we're charging? We had a county contract that we approved for $42,000 plus thousand dollars, I'm going off memory, and the question was, was to come back to see if that's a cost that should be incurred by the commercial property and not the ratepayer. That's what I'm referencing.
Tap to check.
Okay.
Any other comments for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing, and any members of the public would like to address the council on this item. Just tell us your name and your street, please.
My name is Steve Seymour, and my street is Mastick Avenue. I really just have a question, hopefully to educate myself and maybe others sitting here viewing on cable TV. Maybe this question is to Jim, but did you say that permitting, the cost of running the department to do the permitting, the building permitting, is $1.9 million? Did I understand that right?
That was Jim.
The 1718 proposed budget, the building inspection division is, the proposal is about $1.9 million.
So that includes the inspectors, as well as the administration of the inspection process?
So it includes everyone in the chain that works that process?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you said the recovery is $1.5 million?
That's correct. That's, yes.
So who pays the other $400,000?
It's, the expenditures and revenues are in the general fund, so it's really a general fund taxpayer-supported difference when, any difference between revenues generated, you know, specific charges in the general fund that are not equal to the expenditure, it results in subsidy for that particular service or individual.
So then if someone here is applying for a building permit, they pay their building permitting costs and other associated costs, and the rest of what's not paid by them collectively, them and everyone else who applies for these permits, is paid by the taxpayers of the city for their projects? That's just, that's my question. I just wanted to understand it myself.
All right, thank you.
I would just add, the proposal to increase the fees is a step towards minimizing that gap.
Anyone else from the public? If I close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from discussing this item with us.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any action by the council or further discussion?
Well, this is kind of a point of order. So the comments that the council members have made in the corrections or requests, are you, are we going to have those come back to us? Are we voting on what they said? How are we doing this?
So the, one thing that, so there were a couple of things that were requested that we look into, and one in particular that we're intending to bring back. So that was the capacity charge on, in water. So we're, and then the one item we were proposing, that the wastewater illegal connection might be increased to 750, the same way the illegal water connection. So that was not represented in the materials here. In the other items, we would appreciate the city council's direction as to any or all of those items that you'd like us to bring back, but you can do that and approve or make changes to the, and then approve the item that is in front of you tonight.
Okay. Marty?
When are we expecting to hear on the sewer and water capacity study?
So we have, work is in process through our water and wastewater rate consultant, and we would be in a position, I believe, to bring that back within the next 30 days.
So through the chair, so in essence, we can approve everything except the items that the council has asked for further information for?
You can certainly do that, yes.
Okay. And before I submit that we do do that, I just have a question on, it's the reports, page 12, I'm sorry, it doesn't, and it's the agenda, page 74, I believe, but it says other inspections and fees. It's under plumbing permit and related fees is the title, and then it says other inspections and fees, and section 413, and it has a change to $220, which I understand, but why the minimum charge of two hours? That seems, is it because it's after normal hours?
Because it's after normal hours, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, well, I was just going to make a motion that we accept the fees, except for the ones that there are questions and information to be brought back.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm just going to vote no on this, but if it's my colleague's pleasure, I'd like to see a little more information on the increase of permit fees. To me, it's a big jump. If I get an explanation that it's out of whack right now, or it's, or because it's so, hasn't been increased in so many years or something, but to say that we're just aligning with other jurisdictions is not enough for me. So if we can get more information on that, on the background, on why that increase is proposed, and in addition to what council member O'Connell says, you know, to go from $120, $120 an hour to $220, that doesn't explain itself to me either. So I understand going up $20, $30 an hour on certain, you know, certain costs and things, but to take, in my opinion, drastic jumps in certain services is, you know, without explanation, isn't acceptable.
Irene?
So my, I believe I have to do a resolution. So I'm going to introduce the resolution for approval, except for the items that have been asked to be brought back and studied further, not including the building inspections. I'm, you're going to, I mean, let's see, people can, pardon me?
Not including that.
So the, yeah, so the sewer, the illegal hookup change, and the backflow change.
So I have three items. One is the water connection fee, the second is the backflow, the backflow fee, the council member Rico Medina identified, and the third is the consideration of a hydrant meter charge that we do not currently have, as indicated by council member Marty Medina. Those are the three items that staff heard and would be prepared to bring back, other than council member, Vice Mayor Iberas', more general comment about the building fees overall.
Through the chair, is, Mr. Vice Mayor, is it that if the building fees come back in two weeks with a more defined explanation, then that with, or within 30 days, then that may be something that's more palatable?
Yes. I'd like more information on it.
Is it possible, I mean, council member O'Connell, to, for that to be excluded from that, so that it can come back all in one shot, and hopefully there's more information for the vice mayor?
I'm going to say no, particularly because, to me, it's, I understand they are, some of the changes are high, but in general, they cover, they don't even cover the costs of operating this department. So the way I read this, this cost was being, while it was being upped, it was being spread across as broadly as possible to the items that most people use. So it's, you know, it's, we don't want, we don't like charging our residents for things, but the things that they are using cost money, and we have to find it somewhere. So I think this is a reasonable increase. It's trying to close the gap between the $1.9 million it costs to run the department and the $1.5 million we, that's even not an surety, that is an estimate based on past, correct, Mr. O'Larry, based on past experience? So we may get more, we may get less. Anyway, so no, I'm saying no on that part. The short answer is no.
I appreciate the explanation, and I guess even if something does pass on the master fee schedule and it comes back with the building permits, that can be reexamined and modified. Is that not correct?
Sure.
If the question is, could you amend the master fee schedule, as it has been previously approved? So if you approve the building fees tonight, could you take a different action at another meeting? The answer is yes. It would be an amendment to the master fee schedule.
Marty, you have something else?
Yeah, a follow-up question, because the $400,000 from the building department, does that include code enforcement within the building department? That generally isn't really a cost recoverable function. Is that included?
I just looked at building inspection division budget, and it's $1.9 million. So I...
It does include code enforcement. We can look at that more carefully and precise, the difference between code enforcement and building.
That's not really a cost recoverable. It's like the police. You don't get your money back from the police.
A lot of it's an overhead.
Right, right. It's overhead and all that, so there is a cost.
If it's a council's pleasure, that that...
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we can do that.
And I understand, and I think raising a fee, because, well, the whole point of the fee is, what is it cost to issue that permit and to inspect that work? I think is important, and having a little bit more information on that would be beneficial to justify why we're raising the fees. That's what I'm looking at.
Thank you.
And I think we could wait on most of it and come back and hear back from staff. That's what I suggest we do.
Well, I believe Ms. O'Connell introduced the resolution for adoption with the three items.
Right. Excluded.
Right, with the building, with the building permit fees excluded. Right, with the building, with the building permit fees excluded. That they're approved as submitted tonight, yes.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
No.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
No.
Mayor Ruane?